So I just want, I want to bring this meeting to order. This is the Neighborhood Quality of Life Work Group of the City Council, and I want to welcome everyone for being here. Thank you, everyone, for being here. I'll have you guys do introductions. You can go first.
Hi, I'm Scott Rubeau, Ward Six.
And I think that's Miss Mike up there.
Yeah, Mike Kozmerski.
Okay, great. And on the left, I mean, on the right, my right. I can't see your name. Your name is not on the thing. All right, well, I'll let.
Yableen Halls.
Hi, Yableen.
Hi, how are you?
Good. And Lauren V- LaVio? LaBelle?
Lauren LaBeau.
Hi, Lauren. And where are you from?
The Reminder.
Oh, very good. Thank you for being here. You're welcome. Stephanie?
Yeah, Stephanie Murchison Brown. Ward Four.
Yeah, thank you so much. And I see Jerry, Jerry McCafferty, you can introduce yourself, Jerry.
Hi, Jerry McCafferty. I'm the Director of Housing for the city. And Will Brock is also with the city and with me to help me.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, thank you all. Good, good. All right. So thank you so much for being here, Jerry. So last, the last time we met, last month's meeting, we had a few questions regarding the housing programs that the city has. And the two specifically that we talked about and that I'm aware about is the Exterior Home Repair Program and the Healthy Homes Programs. So if you could tell us a little bit about that, about those programs, and then maybe we can ask questions if we need to.
Sure, happy to. And both, both of those specifically are ARPA programs. So those are sort of what we're doing with the ARPA Recovery Funds. We have put, invested quite a bit into home repair, because that was something we just heard a lot of need for. And I'll say that the, the, the office has some ongoing home repair programs, but they're much smaller. So of the two ARPA programs, the Healthy Homes Program operates in certain neighborhoods of the city. In the ARPA Act, there are neighborhoods that are, or there are census tracts that are designated as qualified census tracts. Those are low income, lower income neighborhoods. In those neighborhoods, we operate the Healthy Homes Program. The Healthy Homes Program provides repairs to homes. Virtually anything that is a code enforcement issue in the home gets repaired. They are forgivable loans for income eligible households. So to be eligible, a household must meet the federal standard, this federal numbers. It's a little complicated. In most cases, it's eighty percent of the area median income. But if they meet that, they can get the funds. And the loan, the, the, the money is provided as a loan, but it's forgiven at twenty percent a year. So if they continue to live in the house for five years, it becomes fully forgiven. The average, the average cost, I have to say, so we started that as a smaller pilot. When we did the smaller pilot, before ARPA, we found the average cost was about ninety-four thousand dollars per house. So we were finding that houses with a high, high number of code violate, code issues that really needed to be remedied for people to have healthy homes. So the idea is we're addressing anything that is a health and safety issue that often includes, you know, replacing a roof, dealing with mold damage. But it, but it includes lots of other, lots of other fixes throughout the house. So that is the Healthy Homes Program. The Exterior Repair Program is available citywide. And that is all, but it's also income eligible households. Like the Healthy Homes, it is the same that it is the forgivable five-year loan. So at the end of five years, if someone has continued to remain in the house, the entire amount is forgiven. That takes care of repairs on the exterior of the house. Again, roofs, but also it can cover siding, windows, port, front porches, sort of anything on the exterior. There's a cap on that of forty thousand dollars per house. And just to explain, so we knew that in the qualified census tracts, the housing conditions were worse and the incomes were lower, which is why we had sort of an additional benefit there. But we did want to help people throughout the city who are low or moderate income, which is why the Exterior Repair Program extends throughout the, the whole city. We opened the program. We, we wound up opening and closing the program fairly quickly because the volume of applicants we got was so enormous. So it was open for, I think, a little over two months. And we fully, we knew we had exceeded, the original allocation we put for these programs was five million dollars. We knew we easily exceeded that. We're now expecting that we're probably going to be investing more like ten million dollars. And we still don't think we'd have the opportunity to open it up again. That the number of applicants we got, again, in that first round, has likely spent ten million dollars. I, I do want to say this, these programs, again, because we know that there is so much need for this, this is something that we are always looking for more money for. The first time we did the Healthy Homes Program was using some disaster money that came out of the 2011 tornado. We did it as a pilot. We wanted to learn more about the need and about the kinds of programs that helped people. So we started it there. There was an initial five million dollars actually out of that funding, so we spent five million dollars then. And then, as I say, we'll be spending about ten million dollars of ARPA funds. We are advocating for the state to invest in this kind of home repair program. And I think we'll continue to be looking for federal funds for it. Some of the things we found out were that people often either could not or were reluctant to borrow against their house. Many did not have equity. And even if they did, they were afraid of borrowing against their house, which is why it ended up being this forgivable loan. I think a prior experiment had been just loans that would be paid off payable on, on sale of the house. But people were not willing to take those, and there was tremendous housing needs that were not being addressed. So this, we've, we've really, as I said, learned throughout the process and adjusted the program to try to meet the need and to meet the need and, and particularly local need for what people are looking for and need and what actually gets the repairs done. I see this as sort of investing in housing in the city is investing in the infrastructure of the city. Houses stay whoever live, whoever lives there. And we've previously lost a lot of houses to deterioration. So this is really investing in the stock of housing for the long term.
Thank you so much. Thank you. That's very comprehensive explanation of the both programs. So eighty percent of the median income, what would that be?
Will, do you? So I want to say, Will, so Will is with the Office of Disaster Recovery and Compliance. He's the Senior Project Manager who's running these programs. So he is looking at applications all day long and getting contractors out there. And so I'm hoping, Will, that you can answer it off the top of your head.
Easy questions.
If, if you give me like two minutes, I can bring up the HUD. Or actually, you know, from, from our application, it breaks it down. So it varies depending on how many household members there are. So say there's one household member, I believe it's around fifty thousand dollars or under, under that ceiling. And then obviously, it goes up depending on how many household members there are. And household members could be anything from, you know, living with parents, you know, that reside in the home to dependents and children that, you know, still reside in the home for that matter. But the income is calculated as a whole. So any individual that's over the age of eighteen, you know, any income that they have would be calculated in that assessment. And obviously, there's a change if it's a full-time student, you know, so on and so forth. If we have that, you know, their full class list and we can, you know, provide that documentation as well. So if you give me a couple of minutes, I can actually pull up that, you know, breakdown of what the ceilings are, depending on how many individuals are in the household.
Share a link in the chat or something?
Yeah, I can either share it as a link in the chat, or I can share my screen and, and, you know, show it to you, so you can kind of discuss it a little bit further too, so.
I'd like to do both if you could.
Yeah, absolutely. Just give me a, give me a couple of minutes to pull up my PDF on my computer.
That was one of the questions that came up, because I know there are a lot of people that have needs for these type, type, type of programs, but they're not eligible based on the income. And that was a question that I had, and I'm really glad to hear, Jerry, that the program was exhausted. So that means that, you know, people used it, and I'm really glad to hear that. I just, I know, Dr. Murchison, if you want to comment, I know that was one of the questions that we had regarding the income eligibility and how, in my opinion, and this is wholly my opinion, you know, there are a lot of programs for, you know, low-income people. And of course, the mega-rich don't need the help. So the middle class is always kind of like stuck and not being kind of helped, you know. And in this time, inflation, post-COVID, you know, there's a lot of, I think, middle-income families who are struggling and who are really needing the help. But for, you know, obvious reasons, I guess, because of the poverty levels and the federal guidelines and all that, they're not able to get the help that, you know, that they're needing. So that's something that we had a question about.
Yeah, so it is not a local decision. This is the ARPA funds, when it's used for this purpose, sets the limits. So we generally try to be, when we're using federal funds, we are generally as expansive as we can be. And we make the, 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 we hear this a lot, so we make the eligibility as broad as possible. But it is, we have to follow the, the rules of the federal program, and they have directed it toward this income group. I think that's one of the things where, where, you know, we advocate with the state. The state tends to, when they create programs, sometimes allow them to go to higher levels. So we're always advocating for them and telling them that, you know, middle-class folks, especially around home repairs, it's so important, and it's such a big lift, you know. Putting on a new roof is an extraordinary expense for middle-income folks too. So we advocate for it, but we, we, the, the, the funds we're using, the funds we have for this don't allow to go to a higher level.
Right, right, definitely. Because I have, in Indian Orchard, actually, two of my constituents have a house. They're elderly, they're retired veterans. And I think they didn't even qualify for this, and their porch is falling down, you know. So that's going to be a house that, you know, is going to be off the market because the porch falls down, the rest of the house is going to fall down, and they can't fix it, you know, they can't afford to fix it. They weren't eligible for this because they're probably over the eighty percent median income by maybe two dollars or something like that, which is, to me anyway, sounds ridiculous. But I totally understand, you know, the federal guidelines and you have to follow those. I'm excited that you guys had the program that was local, and, and I know that we have a little bit more flexibility for that. So I'm hoping that we can advocate for the state to provide some, some money for this so that we can expand it to, you know, people who aren't basically living in poverty or, or below that median income, that requirement of the federal government.
Excuse me. I, I had an interruption. What was the number that she gave for the, the the cutoff?
It's eighty percent of the median income in the area.
And what is that?
Will is looking for that now.
It's a, it's a different number depending on the number of people who live in the household. So it's not a flat number that we keep in our heads. But he's, he's looking it up and we'll share it in a moment.
Yeah. So he said, for example, if maybe if it's a one-person household, the median income may be below fifty thousand dollars. And that's poverty to me.
Well, I know. Well, I know that for a two-family, it was five thousand, fifty thousand, five hundred was too much. For two-family household.
And that's ridiculous. But that's the federal government. That's how they, they do those guidelines, unfortunately. So I don't know if we can advocate to the federal government to change that somehow.
I, 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 I don't, I'm kind of not understanding, because each state would be different, right? So the federal guideline wouldn't be a, a, it would, it's not a set number. It's not going to be like if I lived in Mississippi.
It's not a set number, but it is a set percentage. So, so when they say it's eighty percent of the area median income, the area median income is different in different places. This, ours is calculated for the Springfield metropolitan area, which is much broader than Springfield alone. It's, you know, much of Western Mass is included in that metropolitan area. And that's where they take the median income and apply the eighty percent. There is a wrinkle in this that, and the reason why, why it makes it even more difficult. I see someone's putting in the chat what the eighty percent area median income is. It's, there's a wrinkle in ARPA in that it can be either a percentage of the oh gosh. A percentage of the poverty rate, not the poverty rate, percentage of the, oh gosh. There's two different calculations. We used the higher between the two. So we use, depending on the family size, we sometimes are using the eighty percent and sometimes the federal poverty rate. So that's why we particularly need to look at our own chart to have the figures in front of us.
Dr. Brown? Were you done, Dr. Murchison Brown? So Shayvon did put in the, it looks like she put in the application for the.
What that is, is the state DHCD AMI. If you download that information and check by municipality and see how it varies. And to Jerry's, you know, the Springfield, we do have a, a different AMI as opposed to the eastern state of the mass, if you, the eastern part of the state, if you will. So it does fluctuate. As a previous city employee, I do understand where Jerry's coming from, but if you don't have that level of training, it's hard to really comprehend. But if you guys want to do further research, you know, the best resources that DHCB, the link that I've provided, because it has the most up-to-date. And then it gives you different scenarios. So you get like the eighty AMI, the sixty percent, the twenty percent. And those are the things that Jerry was making reference to.
When we have, when we have a program open and when we had this open, the application would actually have the limits on it. So, you know, we don't expect that people will need to calculate this themselves. So, you know, right now, we have homebuyer programs and other repair programs on our website. And those say, here are the maximum incomes for this program. And it has the numbers so that people aren't needing to compute it. I think that's why Will may be having a little trouble. Because we've already closed the program and done the income calculations. So finding a current document may be challenging.
I have it posted on my desk, you know, like tacked up on my wall, and I've had it tacked up for so long, I completely forget what document that was a part of. I know it was part of our Cognito application though, so.
Okay, okay. So, so again, the reason this conversation came up is because one of the quality of life issues is housing and the housing stock. And how we're going to protect it and get more of it, right? Because we need it. I think we were talking the other day about these new complexes that are going up right here downtown with the market rate, how market rate rents. And I think for a one-bedroom, it was like fifteen hundred dollars, you know. And, and I was saying to myself, like, is a teacher going to be able to afford to live there, right? Or a police officer, are they going to be able to live there, you know, if you're just starting off in your career and, you know, you want to stay living in Springfield, you want to maybe rent an apartment until you can buy a house.
It's most certainly not in alignment with college retention, that's for sure. So I know you're absolutely right with that.
You know, and that's what I'm thinking about, right? And what we want to think about in, in, in this work group is how we're going to retain people and encourage, right, our college students to graduate and stay here. Or wherever they go to college, come back here and make their lives and their, you know, homes in the city of Springfield. So that, that's one of the concerns, and that's why I'm so glad that you're here, Jerry, to talk about these programs. And I don't know if there's other, does anyone else have any other questions, anything?
Two questions, and sorry if I sound ignorant. First question is, can these funds be used in conjunction with a homeowner's insurance claim? Because embedded in Massachusetts, homeowners' insurance policies is a ten thousand dollar sum of money that can be applied to get rid of fungus, mold, and bacteria, in particular for roof repairs. And I know roofing is such an expensive cost. Obviously, it wouldn't be applied to the entire repair of a home, but certainly for the roof. So can these funds be used in to help like with a deductible and insurance claim or stuff like that?
So they can't be used to cover anything that insurance covers and that there's an active claim. This is actually, HUD always looks to, or HUD, this is Treasury money, I'm sorry. But both HUD and Treasury look to make sure we're not duplicating benefits that someone can receive somewhere else. So if they can get money from insurance, this would have to cover parts of it that are not covered by insurance. But otherwise, I, I can't think of any reason why they couldn't be used where insurance covers a part of it and we're covering the rest of it.
Yeah, so for instance, insurance will cap at ten thousand, but to, you know, maybe a roof is fifteen thousand. So the extra five thousand dollar expense could be, okay, great, that's good. And a second question. What is Representative Neal's role in this plan? Because he's, he's like the most powerful Democrat. He's the sixth-leading fundraiser in all of Congress. So he has, he has to be able to pull levers and make, make it rain. So what, what is his role? What is, what can his office do for us?
We'd have to ask him.
Well, I mean, certainly, you know, I will say I think, as I said, we've been experimenting. When we, when we did the first Healthy Homes Programs, it was an early model done in the whole country. So I think we're learning, we're teaching him, we're teaching Congress, we're teaching the state. And so I think, we're not the only ones, certainly. And there's more and more people doing Healthy Homes, recognizing, you know, the interconnectedness of, you know, housing stock as being important, the contribution of housing to people's health and to people's ability to do well in school and, you know, go to work, you know, when we're realizing like what mold does to people, et cetera, that the, the benefits are so widespread. So I think continuing to press Congressman Neal, both on, on more, you know, so this is a special allocation of funds, ARPA. There is not a federal Healthy Homes Program. There could be. And I think there could be broader income eligibility. So I think those are the places. And then, you know, so that's at the federal level. At the state level, there is actually a bill in front of the legislature. It's sponsored by the Massachusetts Association of CDCs, and it is also called the Healthy Homes Bill. And it would be creating a statewide, a state program that would be used in gateway cities. So of which Springfield is one that is targeted to gateway cities. So I think also, you know, at the state, thinking about our state legislators, asking them to support that. I have to say, I don't know. I know that bill exists, and I know it's directed to gateway cities. I don't know if it's, it must specify. I don't know what the income caps are on that one. So there's definitely room to advocate there. There is some good support for this, because I think throughout the gateway cities, there's a big recognition of how important this kind of program is. And in a, in a state where production of housing is such a big deal, and they're trying to really push and make more housing, the argument around this is it's preserving existing housing, and it's actually cheaper to preserve a unit than it is to create a new unit. So it ends up having some decent support at the state level. But, but there may be a need for advocacy to bring it more into middle, middle-income homeowners as well.
And what was?
I had a question on the, oh, sorry. I, I had a question on how the ten million dollars was allocated from the ARPA funds. My recollection was the ARPA funds were a block of like one hundred and fifty million or something. Was that dispersed by the mayor, the city council? Or was this just ten million dispersed from a federal agency?
This was, this was a decision made at the local level by the mayor. Yeah, by the mayor and advisors working with the mayor. Early in the process, the mayor asked departments to make recommendations around programs. And so the Office of Housing recommended this at a higher level than ten million. But, you know, there's a lot of competing demands.
I have a question.
Yep.
I have a question.
Yes.
Bottom line, are you saying that there is no more funds for the Healthy Homes for new applicants? It's closed and, and you're just, and those people who haven't gotten it or who are waiting, you're looking for money to service them, or, or is that what I'm understanding?
So the, Will, I'm sure is going to be able to tell me the total number of applicants. We are thinking that we can serve all or most of the applicants. It is probably at least two years of work for us to get to them. And let me come back to what that work looks like. So you, yes, we are, it is correct that we are, the program is closed to new applicants. We received hundreds of applicants. Will will tell us in a minute how many are income-approved and are in the process. And the process of this, they're very labor-intensive. So, you know, having work done on your home can be difficult to manage. And we found after the tornado that a lot of people were taken advantage of by contractors. So the city is very hands-on in this process. We, we write, we, we write up the specs for what needs to be done for a house. We have multiple contractors bid for that. We work with the homeowner to select the, the winning bidder and then go to contract for it. And we inspect along the way to make sure the work is done correctly. We hold back money and we don't pay out the final payment until we approve all the work. So doing hundreds of those projects at once is very labor-intensive. So so the, just that, you know, having it open for two months, we got so many applicants that it, it literally with, you know, the team that is in the city that's doing this work is at least two years' worth of work. So I think, you know, I in my head am trying to think about how do we grow this further? Growing it further includes more money to do it, but it also includes more staff. And it's really, it can be really hard to find people with construction management skills. We are in fact trying to hire a rehabilitation supervisor right now and not getting any qualified applicants. So we're trying to work, we're trying to think creatively about. So in my mind, I'm going for the money, but I'm, you know, thinking, how do I get more money to keep doing this work? But I'm also thinking, what are the most effective and efficient ways to staff this so that we can be doing it at scale and addressing the number of houses that need this work? And that's, that's kind of the challenge we're in now.
Are you saying it takes, those applicants, it may take up to two years before they get serviced?
Yes. So Will, can you tell us the total number?
Absolutely. Actually, if you guys don't mind, I'm just going to share my screen. I have my tracker spreadsheet up that kind of shows all the numbers between all of our applicants and everything for the Healthy Homes Program, so.
Yeah, so to, to miss, to my.
And, and I will, I'm sorry. And so, a- and I will, I'm sorry, uh,
The city received a hundred and twenty-three million dollars in ARPA money. And the mayor's administration divided that money up different ways, and I guess the, this program got ten million dollars.
That's correct.
Go ahead, um, Will, I'm sorry.
No, no problem. So this is actually the smaller of the two programs. This is the exterior repair program. Um, and just to kind of see how many applications we have, and keep in mind that this was completed applications. This wasn't, uh, this doesn't take into account the amount of incomplete applications that we received throughout the process and people that, um, you know, either wouldn't, couldn't supply us with the documentation that we were asking for to go forward um, or, you know, were non-responsive during the application process, for that matter. So out of a hundred and fifty-seven total applicants, we had forty-two that were denied or dropped out based on income, uh, certification or compliance issues. Um, compliance issues being major issues with, um, you know, taxes with the city, uh, you know, and other, um, certain types of issues. Uh, right now, we have seventy-three that are in the inspection phase. So that's seventy-three, uh, properties that we have scheduled to be inspected by the third-party rehabilitation supervisor and a scope of work be created for. Um, and then out of all of those, we have twelve contracts pending that are out with attorneys right now, waiting to be returned to secure the funding for their project. And, uh, fourteen underway, and then three that have been completed thus far since, uh, the beginning of the program, for that matter.
So that's just, the exterior repair program was a hundred and fifty-seven applicants. And do you know, uh, or you can either pull up on the Healthy Homes, how many?
Yeah, give me two seconds. I, I thought I already had that one up, but apparently not.
I, I will say, it, it took, um, it took a number of months just to, um, get through qualifying, while getting in touch with all the applicants, um, qua- making sure they were qualified, um. It's, uh, it's again, kind of a labor in terms of process. I do wanna, I do wanna make sure people know, we have one of the, um, two of the staff people that work with this are Spanish-speaking, um, because we do have a lot of applicants who, um, Spanish is their first language, and, uh, we've wanted to make sure that we're reaching them.
And so in total, there was a hundred and, um, what, fifteen?
So that's only the exterior repair.
Fifteen that actually got approved. Fourteen are on the way, and, uh, forty-seven, forty-seven, or forty, forty-five, or forty-seven?
So this is, this is a different program you're looking at now.
I'm talking about this other one.
Yep.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Excuse me? Um, in total, there's a hundred and fourteen, or fifteen people that are, um, in the program that you, that got the okay. Out of a hundred and fifteen, fourteen are on the projects on the way. I think you said forty-seven are still, um, in the first phase. Is that what I'm reading?
Seventy-three are in the first phase.
Seventy-three? Seventy-three are in the first phase. Fourteen, um, fourteen of them are, are on the way.
Yep, and, uh, twelve will likely be underway in the next two, three weeks here.
Oh, and it takes up to two years? To complete this process, for someone to work on their house?
So where I wanted to go, so, so this one is showing in this program, uh, about a hundred and four. So we have two hundred and, two hundred and ten, two hundred and twenty approved projects. I'm saying that it will take two years to do all the work on those two hundred and twenty projects. Some projects are happening now and are complete, um,
These are two distinct programs, right?
While they're two distinct programs, they're run by the same staff, and they're extremely similar. The difference is more work gets done. Uh, that, that, one of them is capped at forty thousand dollars on the work and only the exterior, and the other one is not capped, and it's the whole house. But the programs are being run by the same staff, and many of the same contractors bid for the projects. So in many ways, the programs overlap significantly. So it does end up mattering for how long it will take us to do the work of the, the applicants that were approved for the two programs at the same time.
Kids, a person be on both programs, or if you win one, you can't be in the other?
Um, typically, if you're in the eligible area for the Healthy Homes, that's the one you want, because you get more out of that. So, and in fact, if someone applied for exterior repair and they're in the neighborhood, I think we had conversations with them about whether there's more work that needs to be done and whether they should be in the other.
Once again, my question was, uh, could they be on both of them?
No.
Okay, you, either or?
Yes.
That'd be great. Thank you. Any other questions from anyone? So I just asked, um, one of our state reps about the state bill that you were referencing, um, Jerry, because you know, I believe in advocating, and I, I'm glad that Scott brought up Congressman Neal, because we're going to certainly be advocating to his office, um, about the, um, you know, the, uh, eligibility guidelines that need to be expanded, for sure. I think, you know, countrywide, of course, but of course, here in the city of Springfield, um, and help, and hopefully having him develop some type of a program like that federally so that we can take advantage of it that way. Um, and any money, you know, that I know that there's a lot of competing, um, demands from the city departments, and you know, I think housing is one of the, the really big ones that we need to focus on in the city, especially because we want people to live here and stay here. So that's one of my big, um, you know, quality of life issues that we need in our city, so.
I am right there with you.
You are, Jerry. You've been working on that for a very long time. I appreciate the work that you've done. So, um, thank you very much for coming out. Does anyone have any, um, last?
There's a question in the chat. Did you answer that question?
Yeah, um, let me see what it was. So Jerry, it says, is this the best, in your opinion, is this the best program for keeping people at risk of becoming homeless or unhomed to keep them in housing? Or do you have other programs for that? That's a very good question. Thank you, Mike.
Um, so I think of those in different categories. I, we don't, while it's possible that somebody might lose their house because of conditions, I don't see a lot of people that go directly from having, uh, housing repairs needed to homelessness. Typically, we see people continue to live with the bad housing conditions. Um, uh, but so there are other programs that are, address people at risk of homelessness. I will say the state of Massachusetts invests heavily in homelessness prevention. Um, those funds, tho- that program is run by Wayfinders. The city put a bunch of ARPA money into that as well. We ran that program through Wayfinders. Um, that was anyone at risk of eviction or foreclosure could get financial assistance to pay off the arrears. Um, there was a ton of mon- and fe- a ton of federal money as well during COVID. There is not as much money left anymore, but the state can s- continues to invest pretty pretty highly compared to other states. Um, so there almost always is some money, although there's there's questions of who's eligible again for that program. Um, and then I think the other programs around homelessness are, um, we have a lot of supportive housing. Supportive housing is, uh, housing with a subsidy and also supportive services, and that really helps with people who have disabilities, especially mental disabilities who have trouble maintaining housing for reasons that might not be financial. Um, so there they have, uh, or maybe in addition to financial. So we have programs where they have reduced rent, but they also have service providers who work with them regularly to make sure they're able to take care of their apartments and themselves and, and get their service needs met. So there's a number of programs that address homelessness and risk of homelessness. As in the world of housing repair, though, there are a lot of good programs. There's not nearly enough funding, and there is much more demand than there are, than there is resources to address the need.
I have a, a question. How, how does this apply to, let's say, a landlord who doesn't meet the financial requirement to get the help, but refuses to invest in his properties? So people that are paying rent, obviously wouldn't have access to these funds. What type of, uh, access do they have? Is there any programs or ways that they can appeal to get the landlord to do something?
I gotta say, that is a real challenge right now. And in fact, we have a big landlord now who's really, um, not very responsible in taking care of their property. It is difficult, usually. Um, you know, the tools we have are, um, code enforcement, uh, so, uh, tenants can call and report the conditions. Um, code enforcement inspects and orders repairs. If the repairs aren't made, they take it to court, and the court orders repairs. Um, you may have heard talk of a receivership program, that is, when, um, they get court orders to make repairs and they still don't do it, we can ask the court to appoint a receiver to actually take over the property and make the repairs. So that's kind of our line of how we address the landlords who aren't making repairs.
Thank you.
Is there, is it, I have to say, I've, I've known contractors who have done work in some of these properties, and they've, uh, reported code violations, and it's impacted their, their careers. They don't get that work anymore. Is there anything like a whistleblower or something that a contractor could help with, that could help get these problems solved, or at least get the process started?
Um, you know, so typically, what, what code enforcement tells me is that a tenant needs to call in the complaint because they need to invite the code enforcement inspector into the house, into the apartment. I mean, we can co- contractors can report things in, um, in shared, in hallways and exterior, but, um, I think a tenant themselves has to report in the, in the unit for code enforcement to be able to go in. And I know that this is an issue, and, and, and that tenants are threatened with eviction for reporting code enforcement issues. Jerry, I A challenge, a challenging area.
I just, I just want to chime in and say, um, Jerry, you know, thank you for the work that you do and the level of commitment. You've been doing this for a while. You know this work. Um, and I, I wonder, is there any, any talk about, um, absentee landlord accountability? How do we find them? How do we, um, how can the city profit off of their, you know, I mean, not so much that it's a profit, but we should be taxing these absentee landlords if they're creating unlivable housing conditions for our citizens. There should be something that could, that should, I mean, I, I don't want to interfere with, of course, like, you know, everybody, uh, anybody can be in the market of, of, you know, real estate, and you can buy something. But how are we going to hold the absentee landlords accountable who, you know, they buy up their property, they don't, um, they don't fix it? And I've seen this a lot with commercial property in my time with the city. Um, so I can only imagine what's happening on the residential side. But I just was wondering if there's any talk about absentee landlord, just keeping them acco- holding them accountable?
There's definitely talk about it. Um, I think, one of, uh, one of the things that so one of the things that we haven't done that some communities have done, um, and I know there's, there's arguments for why we shouldn't do it as well. But one of the possibilities is proactive inspections. So a landlord might have to, that might have to register a rental property and have it inspected every two years, every five years, every single year, you know, I think.
And be present.
Amherst, Amherst recently did that because they have so many landlords that rent to students and don't take care of their properties. Um, so there are places experimenting with, with that kind of proactive. I think the, the concern about it, I know from our building inspector, is, um, he's has trouble having staff to do the recorded inspections, so he can't imagine how he'll have and maintain enough staff to do proactive ones. But, you know, ultimately, that's, that's something that if we could continue to think about and work out, maybe that is an area.
Or, or maybe creating, or working reverse. Maybe we create an incentive for, um, you know, uh, landlords or what have you that are local, um, or, or owner occupied, um. Just a thought, I think if maybe working in reverse, um.
And I will say, the other thing we did in the first go-round of Healthy Homes, and this is something I think more about, we made it available to small landlords. So owners of one to four properties, um, uh, because especially, some of them are, are, are more uh, don't have the income. Um, they're, you know, it's not only their owner property, but their tenants that are suffering if they're not able to make repairs. So we were enabling them to do repairs as well. It's something I would like to continue to invest in.
Yeah, yeah. But those are good. Siobhan, I think some of these are the kind of recommendations that we need to put forward in our, when we finish our, you know, quality of life work group.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, so we can present those recommendations. But I, I don't know if we were done with your questions. I see you had one in the chat.
I was done with Michael's hand is up.
Go ahead, Mike.
Um, yeah, um, to Siobhan's point, it seems like there is a process for letting landlords to do something, but it seems like it takes forever to actually get that done. So maybe there's something. I don't know what the legislation is or what the process is at all, uh, but it seems like amending that process so that it actually works, might be a good step. And to that, uh, point, I, I've worked with Jewish Family Services in the past, and reading in the paper this past weekend about the, uh, sort of a housing crisis for, I don't know, um, people that need housing, um, they're staying in hotels and everything like that.
Migrants right now.
Yeah, I don't know if it's all migrants or what.
Homeless families.
Homeless families. And I know some of the headache that they had was I don't know if it was state requirement, city requirement, for certain number of square footage per occupant, which kept the, you know, so a, a large family of six or seven comes in, they need one of these three-story houses to house the family when they're used to living in something much more smaller.
State building code. It's state building codes and state, um, sanitary code, which is the housing code.
State code issue.
State regulations.
To say, look, it's family members, you can
That's a Richie Neal thing, for sure.
Circumvent a little.
Well, also, so, so their HUD has some rules, so there's some rules at the federal level, but then the state sanitary code also dictate, state sanitary code is what dictates the number of square feet, uh, required per occupant.
But I also want to go back to Jerry's point of staffing, right? And I think something, there's something to be said, um, you know, as a mass hire board member, I have to say, you know, we're losing a lot of trades. We all, it's no secret that technology has taken over. But, you know, where's your, where's the, where's the high school kid that doesn't mind being a building inspector because he can learn the trade? He knows HVAC, he knows, you know, what have you, and there, um, everything's always a civil service, right? And it's a civil service position, and if something, you know, if the mayor or any, uh, his administration could flex the rules on that, that could open up, uh, more staffing issues. It's so hard to be a building inspector, Jerry. You know, you got, it's a civil service. You gotta run through hoops, and there's kids out here that could do it. It's young, uh, I mean, so again, it goes back to retention. Why will I stay? Why will I live here if I have to jump through hoops to, to, to do the minimal trades? Um, and, and where's the training for it? And so, um, you know, at Mass Hire, we do advocate for free training, and I've see, I've, I've been on approval of many of them. The last five that I've seen, totally free. And the seats, it's, it's like you're having a hard time filling the seats, right? Because they feel like if they come and get this education, well, I can't even apply for the job. And it's like, why live here? Can't even apply for the job. I got a residency requirement, and now it's a civil service position. So I think those are, um, also other recommendations that I like to make, because, you know, if the, if the but for is, oh, we don't have the staff, well, we have to relax on some of the, the requirements to get the staff. And then, of course, there's advocating for more funding in order to run programs like this.
One thing I will say, I love that, you know, when we did, um, these Healthy Homes programs, and also, you know, we had a lead abatement program also federally funded, and we sponsored a lot of training for people in the trades. Um, so we got people lead certified and, um, you know, various licensing. Um, and I have to say, so I think that was helpful, because we knew there weren't enough contractors. It has not occurred to me, um, uh, because it's not under me presumably, but I guess is why I haven't been thinking about it. But the idea of training people to become inspectors is a really exciting idea, I think. Um, I don't know, um, that we have invested in that. I'm not sure that it would have occurred to Steve Desalit to be doing that, because he's not usually involved in training programs. But that feels like an opportunity for he and I to talk and see if there may be some ways to use HUD money or other money to do.
And just even if you run a pilot program. And just even if you run a pilot program to see what, you know, what's up. If it's successful, I'm sure Richie would fund it. It's, it, the training would happen in his very own building.
Yep, yep.
If I can make a suggestion, because I teach as a, a high school trade teacher, uh, get into the high schools. There's, there's probably a half a dozen carpentry programs in the Pioneer Valley alone. And I know those kids are hungry, they're ready to work and they're looking for offers. Yeah, if you can, I am sure any carpentry teacher would welcome the opportunity to have that conversation.
It might solve your contractor problem, right? Because if they are able to be an inspector, then they don't have to blow the whistle and the contractor doesn't have to, you know, lose the job because it's all, everything's connected, you know, and it makes sense.
That's good. I think, I, I want to ask the question that you asked in the, um, chat, Siobhan, is, uh, where is the Office of Disability in the city? Do we know?
Um, I don't know that we have an office that has that particular name.
So when I, when I, um, I'm trying to apply for a handicap sign outside of my owner occupied rental. And in order, um, for me to park out front, because sometimes it's like, there's nowhere to park here. Um, because I, my, my rental includes the driveway, so my tenants park in the driveway. And on the application for the handicap sign in the residential, it says to mail it to like something, something East Columbus. And when I mailed it, it came back. Um, and, and I had my doctor fill it out and everything and it took time for him to fill it out. And it, it came back and I was almost short of sending it straight to the mayor's office. But it's a, it's a very achy time and I didn't want my mail to get lost.
Interesting. So.
That answer for you?
Health and Human Services used to be at 1600 East Columbus. I wonder if that's.
I'm gonna ask Helen. Yeah.
Yeah.
Is it now, it might be that, uh, school street address?
Right, but I wouldn't send it there yet because I, I'm not sure.
If someone could, if someone could update me, that would be great because I'm in great need of the handicap sign.
I'll, I'll, I'll definitely try to update you. So, um, we have come to our time and you guys know I'm a timely person. Um, first, thank you, Jerry. Thank you, uh, Will, for being here and thank you, uh, the rest of the, uh.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, we were supposed to have the police here to talk about the dirt bikes, but they didn't respond yet. So hopefully at the next meeting, we'll talk about that. I just want to thank Jerry for being available and for giving us this information. This is really good information. I'm excited about the, um, the report, I think that we're going to have, we're going to have some really good recommendations. And I'm just hoping that we as a city and city council and the administration will be able to take all of these recommendations and put them to, to good use and to good work. So thank you all. Any last?
Thank you. I just have one, one comment.
Go ahead.
Um, I had read somewhere or heard someplace that they did, uh, uh, a, uh, quality of life, uh, meeting with, uh, uh, certain people um, to address the shootings and stuff like that. Was that?
Yeah.
Did, was, was that?
They didn't invite us. So.
That seems a bit problematic, uh, Councilwoman.
What was the output of that?
I, I agree with you. Um, there's a lot of things problematic with that because, um, I don't know, it was just, it was something that the administration did. It wasn't, um, I guess they didn't.
So do they have their own working group? Is this now a separation of?
That was just, um, that was in response to the uptick in, um, gun violence the last few weeks. So they responded to that. And I think.
Okay, so this is a matter of language. I was gonna say, so this is a matter of language. We are the working group. But that is, okay, thank you for that clarification. But what came out of that?
That, um, I think that the police department and the mayor are, are doing some work on that. I'm not sure. I didn't see any reports as of yet. I think they're just gonna have increased patrols.
So.
Go ahead.
So, um, I'm just wondering, is it gonna be parallel to us? Is that ongoing, is, or ongoing group?
I don't think so. I could try to get you some more information the next time we meet.
Okay.
All right. I'll try to get more information on that. But yeah, that's, I, I think I agree with Siobhan. It was more a matter of semantics and the language that was used wasn't necessarily what they wanted to put out there.
But it's not a group, working.
It's not, it's not a working group necessarily. No. It's basically a, a kind of, I want to say maybe kind of like a task force to address the, uh, gun violence in the city.
Is it still existing?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
Okay, I'll just wait for you to get more information. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you for that. Um, it looks like our next meeting will be August 15th. Is that okay for everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna do the third, um, the third Tuesday of the month from now on.
Okay.
All right, great. Again, thank you all so much.
Thank you. You too. Goodbye.